Eighteen day assessment.
Yeah, yeah.
I just turned the recorder on. I thought everybody... Yeah, the state, they didn't, it was supposed to sunset after like the court, five, six years, five years, and now it's been fifteen years and it's still going on. Eighteen day assessment.
Yep. So if they get money, they're not gonna ever let it go.
Okay, this is for you, but you gotta see this. Remember my refrigerator?
Yep.
I did all the pieces there.
Oh.
That's just the, uh, the shelf. Look at how much stuff I got there.
Yeah, pretty smart.
And then... I'm using a...
This is a proposal. A proposal for them to do this.
Small region, though, the one down bottom there.
Does money come with it, or do we gotta pay them?
Yes.
But that, this, I've done that before.
You don't pay them, and then...
And if we become a Landmark Society, we can get grants?
Yeah, stupid, uh...
Well, where are we? It's downtown, this is, this is changing to some of the streets, but I don't like...
Oh, we're out, we're in the whole streets. Right? Everywhere.
Why even, I don't know.
My recycle.
It's hopefully has South Lake, Kenzie.
I just took the, the shelves off, because I had three nights.
That's not fair to someone.
Thanks.
But look it over, okay?
I will.
No, it's nice.
Okay, I could have got, here's your handies. In other words, this will be an expansion of what we already have?
Yes. There are taxes credits involved, for homeowners, and for businesses, there's state credits for homeowners, and federal grants for businesses.
Yeah, I thought that was...
It's like thirty, thirty percent you can claim on your taxes.
How am I wrong?
Make this, people who just...
What I don't need to, for, uh, repurpose it?
I, I haven't been in, uh...
Are you in?
I, I don't have a, uh...
I don't know.
I mean, most that I've seen have been on the other tone.
This might, to say, these other streets is, is the amount of this can go way up, you know?
Right. Okay, so, so, we just cleared that up, the, uh, payment to New York State, uh, Department of Public Service?
It's, it's ongoing assessment from the state.
Every electric entity standard?
Yeah.
Yeah. Was based on sales?
Yes.
It's our percentage. They decreased the percentage over the years, but they're still collecting. It's supposed to have always been. It was supposed to go away like ten years ago. Almost, yeah, because it was supposed to be... Kind of like the railway tools?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Mike, I watched the, uh, last meeting on the two.
The two.
And, uh, Courtney got me the, the, uh... Our, our ministry report and such, so I feel as though I can say hi when it comes up.
Okay.
I went to watch it again this morning, I couldn't, I couldn't find it. I don't know why.
Technology.
It was a good meeting, I think it was the best meetings that...
Right.
So far, it was a good meeting, yeah.
It was a good discussion.
Yeah.
All right, so welcome you all here tonight. Here's kind of the agenda, the approval of the bills, is, do you have time to look over the bills, everyone?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
For a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Approval of the January eleventh meeting minutes? Courtney, I know for the email, everyone knows that.
Yeah, I reviewed it.
I'll make a motion, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Period. All right. We, uh... We had a representative here from the Historical Society in, uh... Who was to deal with the possibility of the village expanding our, uh, historical district. Right now, it's just this downtown area, and it was, uh... It would do, uh... Enlarge it to some of the, uh, other streets, um... South Lake was included, Mackenzie, and Clinton Street, and, uh... One of the questions, myself, Courtney, and Renee sat in on the, uh, presentation. And we, we have a few questions that, you know, and, uh, now that I've given you these copies, that we ask you to take them home and look them over, and any questions you may have, uh, get back to me. And, uh... We'll, we'll see where it goes, uh, read it over, like I said, I just got this information back from them. The proposal, they would do the scope of work, we would apply for a Preserve New York grant, which would be eighty percent funded, and twenty percent would be on the village side, uh... So, it's something that we feel after we discuss it, that we want to pursue. We can, uh, apply for the grant, and then if the grant is awarded, um... Again, we would get, hopefully eighty percent, I'm not sure if, it could be up to eighty percent. So I want to call her back and see if, if eighty percent's kind of locked in, uh, to see what our exposure would be, financial exposure.
Joe, is, is the twenty percent homeowner, or property owner, or is it the village?
It's the village. It's totally the village, uh... The, uh, some of the pros are, if you extend the historical district, it may help down the road for grants. But again, look it over, and, uh... Again, it, this, their proposal does not include some of the other streets in the village, which concerns me. I think if you're gonna do it, uh, it should include all the, all the streets, all the people, homes that are eligible, should be included in this, rather than three streets, so... Well, we'll, uh, I'll, I'll talk to her and, uh, see if that would increase the cost. The cost for them to do this was what?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen? Fifteen thousand dollars.
Go over it.
So...
Do we know when the original, I guess, survey or assessment or whatever it was to become? The Landmark Society was done, like, how long ago?
Well, I, I read in here, it was done back in nineteen eighty.
So all that's in here?
But it's due to be done again, evidently, we have to update that.
So will we lose it, if we don't update it?
No, no. No, this would have nothing to do with our...
So this is just an expansion?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, read it over.
Do we get, and I'll read it, I'm sorry to ask, but do we get the ability to choose the area, or are they saying they choose the area?
They, they chose these areas.
Okay.
Those three streets are the ones that they, they chose, and I don't know about...
I wonder why, and I guess, I guess those are questions.
I don't know either.
Okay. Thank you.
So, get some more information, I'm waiting for another call back from her.
Okay.
And, uh...
Yeah, I, I would propose some questions as well, if they could do that, if we would, uh, pursue.
We'll, uh, we'll talk, and at the next meeting, we're gonna have to discuss it, because, uh, there's a timeline on this.
Okay.
The grant has to be in by March thirty first. So, we, uh, we'll move on this.
Joe, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Um, what other streets would you like to see included in that?
Rochester Street, Upland Street.
It's like, we already up and around?
Yeah, I mean, where are they?
The original.
Munger Street.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know why they just chose three, you know?
I would think they would just do a bigger circle, right? They've already got a circle of this, just expand it out all the way around, rather than just go that way.
Currently, it's just the downtown buildings from here to...
The tracks.
The tracks, right, so, expansion, so, yeah. Part of what she said was, they had to look at the historical significance of the houses, so, um, you know, some of those streets, they, they, Munger for instance, the, the first half is, has, you know, a lot of older houses, but then after that, it's newer houses. Same thing with Rochester, there's a point where it goes from the older, so they, there might be a point where they want to cut it off, do half of Munger and half of Rochester instead of the whole street, because, you know, newer homes and ranches aren't gonna really fall in there really historically.
And when she first came to talk to us, too, the scope was bigger. When, when the, this was received, she was talking about going down halfway Munger and halfway Rochester, and then when this came, it had really, you know, it was much less than what the original conversation was.
So I don't know if they, by the price they quoted possibly was to do that area, so I'm saying if, if you're gonna include all the other streets, I mean, this figure might double, I don't know. So we would have to look at that and see what our exposure would be, uh, when we get all the data in, okay?
Sounds good.
We'll look them over. Okay. Uh, we met, uh, with the Virgin Park Committee on February sixth, uh, discussing the upcoming Park Day. Renee was with me to do that, we, uh, we both went and, uh, met with them, with their new committee, and, uh, I think they're gonna do a nice job, we had a very, very good meeting, uh, threw some ideas out there, and, uh, about, traffic control and changing the ruin a little bit, so, um... I mean, and they were really enthusiastic, and, uh, we came away feeling like, you know, we're good hands there, so... And, uh, we will work closely with them for Park Day, as we always have. Look, I attended the monthly, uh, Virgin Fire Department also, and I want to give special recognition, uh, you probably all heard Stephen Friday saved a individual's life in Rockport at Walmart, uh, doing CPR, and, uh, he is a member of our Virgin Fire Department, so I'm very proud of him for, for knowing all the guys there, for all they do. The Tree and Park Committee, we met on February first, and we are currently updating the parks master plan, and we have drafted a mission statement, and, uh, we're focusing on, uh, what we call the Hickory Park Project. Uh, this project will be grant, community funded, and, uh, divided into phases. We've got it right now at three phases where we'd like to implement different things in each phase. It's gonna take time, and, uh, we're gonna reach out to, uh, the community, to commercial accounts, uh, businesses, to try to raise money, uh, you know, Bondwell, the big, uh, factory here, will be, uh, we're sending a letter out to them for a donation, and, uh, we're, uh... We actively, uh, trying to get money for fundraising, so that we can fund this. So, I want to say thank you to all the members of the Tree and Park Committee for their time and everything they're doing, it's for the community, and, uh, can't thank them enough. Eric, our DPW guy, he's, uh, scheduled to attend Morrisville College again, February thirteenth through seventeenth. He attended last month, and he actually finished first in the class, I'm proud to say of him. Yeah, he did really well there, and, uh, he's going back for further studies now for the wastewater plant operation. Under the sewer, there's no problems at the plant to report, we're still awaiting the delivery of all the equipment. I talked to Eric Weiss two days ago, and he says they're still waiting, and I asked him about when they were gonna start the catch basins, before we have the spring thaw, or we have all the infiltration, uh, of all the water to our wastewater system, and he, uh, told me that they're in the final stages, and that he had discussed it with the contractors, and that they were gonna be starting that very shortly. He said they had designated X amount of dollars towards doing that out of the project, so... We haven't got the equipment here to start installing at the sewer facility, so at least we can start getting these catch basins, uh, replaced. They're actually gonna replace them, too, they're not gonna just try to re-throw out them, I guess they're too far gone, too much water's leaking into the sides. So they're, uh, planning on pulling them right out and replacing the whole units. Uh, the electric, uh, the guys have been, are infrareding our system, as they do every year, with our infrared camera, it shows up hot spots, and, uh, when you see them, you can, uh, actively go out and do your maintenance repairs on them before they become major issues where you knock power out, so, it's a great tool. And, uh, I guess this week, next week, next, next week, Matt, you're gonna start infrareding the houses?
Yep.
So we have, how many houses signed up?
Eight.
Eight houses signed up for the infrared scans for energy efficiency, there's no charge to the homeowners for the village to do this, and we shoot the houses and see where they may be leaking, uh, heat in the wintertime, that's what we do with the cold weather, and, uh, we give them a pamphlet showing, uh, the results for where they, where the heat losses are showing up, so, and then they can address it, hopefully cut down on their, uh, utility bills. And I want to say, during the high, extreme winds we've had, I've added in my minutes here, uh, excellent work from Nick and Matt, your dedication, keeping the lights on, is truly appreciated by all the customers we serve, so, thanks for the good work. That's it from me.
Well, yes, Mike, I, we threw this into a number of things that are, uh, Joe had, things as well, take a look. I'd like to point out the night class, um, so far for the year, so pretty much all of January, um, we received three thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and forty cents in interest already, on the night class account, so, and interest rates went up a quarter percent, so we should be seeing, uh, more. We're pleased with that. And unless you want me to go through the lines?
Well, that night class account truly paid big dividends already, moving all the money into the night cla- night class account. The interest speaks for itself, I mean, compared to what we used to get, we wouldn't see numbers like this, so... This has turned out to be a, a great revenue stream, so it's a great move. Okay, did Gary have a report?
Uh, he did not submit a report, but I do have the year, everything that was done for, uh... Village employees for, uh, the, the, if you guys want to pass it around, take a look.
Court enforcement officer will be out of town for lease tomorrow, I believe, I think he's done for like ten days, so... And Emily, our trustees, out here tonight, she's, gave birth to a beautiful baby girl.
Actually, is that more?
Oh, okay, the, the...
Hard to tell.
He's beautiful.
I saw a picture, you know, uh... I should have known, a blue hat, blue hat on, right? Uh, beautiful baby, beautiful, and, uh... She, uh, had a little trouble afterwards, so she's home recovering, so we wish her the best. She said she hopes to be here for the next meeting.
Can I ask a question? Do you need a permit to put something, like, if I put a shed on my, uh, my property, if it's movable, even if it's movable?
Yes.
It's busy for a small little village, huh?
Yeah. You say forty-eight? Yeah, forty-eight, almost percent.
It's a hot tub in there, I don't know how to.
It's a net, isn't it? That one's right off the software.
Right.
I have a motion to accept the officers' reports.
I'll make a motion.
For a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Privilege on the floor.
I have a question. So I understand the grant that was for grant application for the funding to make prepared to the south side of the Tully building was turned down, so what plan is in place to come up with money to do that?
We're putting money in our current budget, to, not that we can do it all in one year, but we can address the worst spots in our general budget and allocate money for that, yeah, I don't want the building falling apart.
Right.
And I did ask the Historical Society when they're here, when she thought that would become available again, and she said twenty twenty-six. So, it's at least three years off before they're gonna have funding in place again to even offer that. They said it was such an overwhelming response that, uh, she couldn't believe it either, how, how many applicants there were, so unfortunately, we didn't get it.
Is that something that is applied for every year?
It's, it has to be offered.
Okay.
So, what, what, what she said was that the process they go through is, so, they basically write a grant to get the money, and then they take the money and then we apply, and everybody in, in the area applies, right? I think it was the whole state, wasn't it? She said the whole state. So, the Landmark Society has a grant for this whole state, and, uh, so now, the people who receive funding are in both the process to, um, close their projects out, and then after that, they're going to apply again to that money, and then they have to see if they get the money, the grant, to offer back to us, so... It'd be quite some time, or they might not be able to do it again. So they'll have to look for other grants and, and, uh, put aside some more money to do it.
Yeah.
Because that, that work is looking pretty bad, we don't want it to get any worse with, uh, with the water in there, it's pretty, it's up, so...
Was there an estimated cost prior to the grant being written? I, I just wasn't aware of that.
I know, uh, I'm sure when Anna wrote that grant, that there was estimates, but I don't know if they were at the time I had.
I believe it was gonna take the full fifty thousand dollars.
At that time?
At that time.
And that was, do you know when that was written, or, like, years, or?
No.
Probably, well, you, a, a year ago.
Year ago.
The grant was, probably due in March last year.
So we are going to add fifty thousand into the budget?
No. We can allocate fifty thousand, but, like, like I said, there's some spots that are really bad, we'll, we'll address those. You know, before they deteriorate further than we are.
I guess some people have to do some quotes and see what prices they're gonna be.
Okay.
I know, uh, dailers, uh, contracting there, they've done work on the back of the building, repointing and things, too, so, we'll, we'll get quotes.
What, I, they're, they'd be nice to have a break.
I have a question. I've heard some rumors, so I'd like to confirm whether the rumor is just that, or possibly fact. Um, we have senior exercise equipment in the park that was established and implemented because of the grant, and there's two, uh, handicap stations for, um, for athletic abilities for, for handicapped to avail themselves up. Um, the rumor I've been hearing is that they want to remove the handicap stations, that the athletic stations for the handicap. So I hear several comments about that, whether it's true or not, then you can establish them for me, please. But, we're putting in a new back room, and you'll have to have that handicap accessible. It doesn't make any difference how often a handicapped person uses it, it still needs to be there and be acceptable and accessible, um, which I agree with. And it doesn't make any difference to me how often handicapped people are able to avail themselves of those two stations. They didn't cost us any money, and they were put in, and to me, it would be a slap in the face to any handicapped person to have them removed and not have that ability to use them if and when they were able to. The fact is that they're there, they've been established, they were instituted because of the grant, and I can't understand why anybody would want to remove them. How, how do you reconcile doing that, but yet having a bathroom facility for a handicapped person? So I'd like to know if the rumor is true or not, and if it is, then I will also take exception to that, because it's not the right thing to be doing. And anything that you do to improve the village, if you're applying for grants, whatever, there's usually a question involved, how are you accommodating the handicapped? So that would have a third of it, and, again, to me, it's an ethical, moral, uh, situation, and I see it as being very wrong to even reconsider.
We, we had a meeting, I don't know, just a few nights ago, Tree and Park Committee, and no, we're not taking that equipment out of there.
Thank you.
Todd brought up a very good point about that equipment, it is, it would probably help us down the road, because it is there for...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
He brought up a ver- a very good point, saying that having that equipment in the park would probably help us down the road when we apply for grants.
Definitely.
So, no, it's not, the stuff isn't going anywhere.
All right, thank you.
I sit on the Developmental Disabilities Committee for the county, and I'm very proud that we have a, a handicapped accessible park, and I would be very adamant, like you, to stand up for that.
Okay, thank you.
Within our village, and I, you know, I, it's the first time hearing of this, so...
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Anything else from the floor?
Is there anything, is there a petting license that people have to get to go door to door? We've been inundating these basement guys, they don't wanna check in the basement. And a few weeks ago, they came and they're relatively nice, okay? Today it's a little pushy and painful, but everyone, go by me and go look at my basement, I said.
And you have a $10 a day feed?
Right, so they came in today and got the petting permit and paid their money and.
We were working in the neighborhood.
And have all their information.
I should ask them where, where house are you working at, let me go look. But I didn't, you know.
So they have a door to door permit.
Okay.
And it's $10 a day, right?
It was on the bill, basically.
$10 per week for the food.
So they have one week, $10 per day, okay.
Cold weather seems to have limited some of our dog owners. I mean, they don't even pick up after their dog. There's certain spots where I walk at the Block Lake and Clinton and through the parks, like.
I'll put another.
I don't know. I don't understand when it's cold and.
Still should pick up after your pets.
Yeah.
I'll put another, I walk our dogs all the time. I, I know what you're saying. Anything else from the floor? Trustee concerns. Mike? George? Oh, I'm good, thank you. Okay, nothing under, under new business, uh, general budget discussion?
Well, I'm gonna start with electric. Matt's here, so we have a little bit of bad luck, so if we ask what we can. As I've said many times, the electric budget is much more complex than the other budgets. This is a enterprise account, so we are allowed to make, make money on this. And it's very difficult to predict what revenues are gonna be because, you know, a hundred years ago, probably only three, four years once I started, the spring is extremely wet. So Bondwell, the fields, it was hard to get on and plant. And then we had a terribly dry summer. So there, usually it was way, way down. So it affected our quite tremendously. And then polar vortex a few years ago, that made residential go way up. Or this year, it's, it's been pretty warm, so it might go, might go down. So it's, it's an educated guess. So I am. So if you look, looking at just the financial under revenue. Last year, we were pretty darn close for residential. Residential rural, those residences we have outside the village. That was also really close. Commercial Village. Commercial Rural, those commercials that we have outside the village and mostly the industrial park.
Let me just say, our tariff area runs from the Kaiser Wilcox to the gun club, okay? So it's like you see, some of it's out of, out of the village, but it's still part of our electric system. And that's where our tariff runs to.
So I felt like we were really close with those estimates in the past. Industrial, that's Bondwell alone. Like I said, they can swing. It was 1.16 million dollars in 2021. So it bumped it up a little bit, not much. It's been a good year. The municipal accounts, that's been pretty, pretty steady. Misleanness revenue, miscellaneous, so we just, no one wants to have any. Electric purchases, we kept 1.5 million in there. Even though we purchased a little under 1.4 previous year. They, the next few lines, under maintenance, just, just tuition expenses. Those are all pay lines. Like I said, in previous years, we budge under these lines, even though, Matt will tell you, there's some time where some years, something goes bad. We spend a lot of time fixing something. See one line, one other. Again, this is an educated guess of where we're gonna spend those funds and all the lines we're gonna repair. So I tweaked, I tweaked a few things in that area, just going along with the past few years averages. To give us kind of a close estimate of how much we're gonna spend money in these spots.
One thing I'd like to point out, the jilt right now, under the revenue, if you look at the interest, you've seen in years past, it was $35 in interest. In 2021, 22, it was $50. Now you see it's $12,000. That's due to that night class account. That's how, how much revenue, it's huge, what a revenue stream. So that's, that's huge.
And I guess that the interest rate just went up, so we'll be continuing a little more. Pretty happy there. Um, I have just depreciations in the budget. Nobody can kind of say it's a paper number. Barb might wanna explain what depreciation is, but. And put it on the budget, see if I back that out, cause really depreciation is a paper number for our accounting. First one I did, is to draw your attention to halfway down the page, sumer accounts. Mayor reading, and then the next customer building, that's the part of Renee's pay that is out of the electric budget. Jobbing, we put funds there. We do jobs for other people, a lot of people come in and do jobs for us. So if we do mutual aid and people come here to do stuff, that's where we generally put that under. Mayor and trustees pay. Clerk treasurer, that's money paid out of the electric. Executive department, that's kind of a group of all part of contractuals in electric. Treasurer accounting, that accounting, that is Barb's part of her pay in the electric. Law department, I see attorney. Now, general office expense, this is kind of a catch-all for a lot of things in the electric. Used to, there used to be 10 or 12 different accounts for that. And it kind of goes along with, in general, with buildings and store and all those. So you have, they're part of this building that they pay for. It's just kind of, and even some of their, I think even their clothing allowance in there too. So this is a catch-all because we don't have to account for those things separately. For the public services commissioner report, so we're just gonna bundle those together. Insurance, that's the umbrella insurance portion for electric. The fore commission, you guys talked about that earlier, you saw the bill in, with the bills. That's our ETE assessment. We have to give a percentage of our income to state every year. It was supposed to be solely go away and not forever. It keeps on coming every year. Sick time buyouts, retirement, workers comp, health insurance, social security. And you have training and education. Lineman going back to the lineman school, so part of that, a lot of training. Appreciation of the property. Revenues, first down on that, transform payment, debt. That went up because into, into the patient was receiving our new digger derrick, let me order. They're projecting that is gonna be here, maybe in August. So, you know, that's money in there for that and bucket truck. Pilot, $58,000, the money that the electric gives to general fund every year. Under fixed assets, budgeted work orders, $150,000. Talk about that one, just down there, which I guess is a good time to do that. Matt's here, I was hoping maybe he could go over. So on the bottom, it says additional assets, those are 300 accounts. We put $150,000 source sign every year for different projects and equipment that the linemen are gonna do. So Matt, if you wanna tuck up some things that you got planned for.
Um, okay, I'll just check some of the bigger ones here. Let's see here. The $39,000 for transformers, the price of transformers gone up exponentially. And we need to have good stock. We have a set amount of transformers right now, but they're very expensive. So we're gonna get as many as we can. Underground services, $4,000. We're gonna replace some handhole boxes in the subdivision and raise up transformer pads. I believe there's four of them, we got in yesterday, actually. Some of the other ones are pretty cheap, just having stock of streetlights and poles. $65,000 for transportation, that's gonna be for the digger derrick payment and the current bucket truck payment, I believe. And laboratory equipment, we'll put Tangerine in there. Looking at GIS to GPS, the entire electrical system. And it's a pretty decent overview. We have some projects that we're gonna do this year. One, we got a quote on, we're looking at pulling conduit under Buffalo Road, so we can pull a new cable. So we experienced problems with our underground cable. Currently, we have a fail-safe and we can pull a new cable and continue to feed the industrial park. And that one's $34,000. So we're gonna see if we can swing that or not. We have to come out of transformers, but right now, we can't even get transformers, so.
What's the lead time, Matt?
Uh, like at least 30 weeks, probably. If can't, can't even order them, you know, so.
60 weeks unused.
Yeah. So we, other projects we've got, we're gonna have to replace some service poles. We got a couple primary poles that need replaced and tree trimming, some underground services.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. That's a quick overview of the electric, there's a standard one of those.
I have a question. You've given the actuals for '20 to '21, but only the budgeted amount for '21 to '22. Did you not have the actuals yet for?
Where's that?
Just so if you're looking across the top of the first page, you have the actual figures for '20, '20 to '21, but just the budgeted amount for '21 to '22.
So I forgot to change that. So the actual should be for '21, '22.
Okay.
And so I forgot to slide the numbers across there, so.
No, that's okay.
Yeah. Glad you pointed that out, I didn't even notice. So the. I'll fix that. The 2021, 2022 budget year, it would be the actuals and that's what Barb just closed out last month. And the budget is. Sewer then?
Thanks, Matt.
So the general and electric are both doing very well right now financially. Sewer, that a problem, I don't know, I think it's a problem child. Last year, we basically both even had, we made $1,886. It's a pretty good concern, but it's very, very close. And there's been, you know, anytime we can handle it, we can go back close, it's good. It's a number of years we're in a run, so. Went over the revenue, sewer rents, we've got $400,000 in there. It was 386 previously, paneling on sewers. I dropped that down to 13, could be more online. Sewer service for other governments, that's the money we get from the schools for kids everywhere, the waste. You remember, that's fairly new because we've got 10 years of money from them all upfront. So that finally expired, now we can take that year to year, so that does help us. Again, interest, there's two interests in there. There's interest earnings and there's interest capital reserve. Interest is just on the regular sewer funds that are in the bank. The capital reserve is years ago, money was put aside for a new sewer plant, that I would have used for the new sewer plant. So I felt like we should switch that over and be reserved for replacing tanks when that time come. That's gonna be a big problem number, these tanks are central to that, so having that money there and, you know, to add to it in one year can be helpful. So those two, CD, additional interest, again, because of night class. Right on the real property, that's $1,000, that's what we get for renting the parkland out back. Sewer plant. Sales of equipment, we do that. Having important to sell, sell those, that's just here. There's unclassified revenue, which. The board pay, we'll go to contractual. Mayor's paying Eric to contractual. Clerk treasurer, that's me, and contractual. Services, there's nothing in there that's, that gets better. Deputy treasurer is Renee's pay. Contractual, deputy clerk, that is Barnes pay, contractual, my attorney, $3,000. We put more, some more engineering this year from previous. Everything we have going on over there, we make a difference, so just as a caution. Usually that stuff gets rolled into the grant, financing for the sewer, actually pays for this, I think. Building, kind of personal services, pay line, they got. I don't foresee, I was thinking as much work on the buildings initially the last year. But most time what happens is things go wrong up there and we have to. Fix it, so. Central garage pay, nothing on equipment, central garage contractual. Central communication, same, central storage, door roll, I bump that up. Feel expensive because it's been increased. Same with that process, I want to make sure we have the money in there uncovered. We were out here last time, we didn't explain what those are. Phones and. Done processing our computers, not insurance. Yes, the sewer's part of insurance. Missile association dues, that's not just dues to different groups that Chris belongs to, is also his claim. Continuity. I told you before, so that's, that's an odd number because how I balance a budget to exactly zero. I like to keep that as high as I can. There's so many times in all the years that the plan has malfunctioned and it's not easy to urge you to place bits on there. Equipment fund, we've started to put money aside in all the different budgets for equipment. So maybe one day we'll be able to buy the equipment right out of the equipment funds. Santeras sewer, personal services, sanitary sewer, contractual. Treatment disposal, pressure services, and A-line obviously. Put some money on their sewer equipment, so if there's a need up there, there's something there. Treatment disposal. That's also a high number, it's a bit of a catch-all too for all the processes up there. Have a lot of the expensive polymers and chemicals that can be used, hopefully operate that plant, so that is where that goes.
When is the AD call contract expire then?
So we'll be next, so we'll put it up for bid next January.
That's going to be in this budget. So have we taken?
Well.
We have nothing there for, because we know it's going to go up.
Yeah, but it's hard to estimate what they're going to charge us. Your tank lines will be done by the, by January anyways, so the number won't have to be until the final budget.
Yeah, we'll just be the.
Unless you had the murders.
Additional ones, yeah, the extra ones they have to do.
Unless you get, unless you start early.
Okay, initial recovery.
We have due to the retirement, so it's kind of building insurance, mountain insurance. The trouble we're going to run into down the road is the debt. It's also, it's already significant, and then we add on the. Just barely try to monitor it now. Probably be a couple of years before we go for long-term financing on these projects. So in a couple of budgets, it's going to, we're going to figure out. How. It's not going to work out. Because it's been very tight, like I said. The main part of that bond is. Eighteen, nineteen years left. That's the two thousand five hundred a year, and we'll be putting additional stuff on that.
According to the debt limit set by, by the state, how close are we to the?
That gives a general.
Okay, does not apply to the, right, okay.
So when we go to. For the debt here, for the bonds, what kind of determine that is our credit rating. And, but the more we borrow, there's a lot of that, once they issue the bond, it might rates go up. But the financing mostly for the plant is through EFC. But for the electric, I'm sorry, for the general, for our limit that we can tax all the constitutional tax limit around. Any questions? Yeah, I will send the budgets to Emily, so she can see them, and I will go over everything else by phone.
Matt, what I'm thinking of, did the batteries get ordered for the substations?
I'm not sure.
I know Nick said they wouldn't come in until May, he ordered them now.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he ordered them yet or not, but that was the plan.
I, I fill out P O for it.
Yeah, he stays on top of it, so they're totally.
We didn't want them coming in and sitting in storage for months, months. That's what we wanted to get it, in May we can shut one station down, change the batteries out, do the other station. Okay, do that in May. Okay. We have a resolution. On the three of twenty twenty-three. For the setting of election inspector positions. Whereas the village will hold a special election in the year twenty twenty-three on March twenty-first. They're offered the position of trustee to fulfill an appointed office, which will end on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the village has a single election district and requires four election inspectors. And whereas the village board of trustees has selected Connie Fiedler, Louise Holbert, Karen Manners, and Virginia Adams as election inspectors, with any certified pole worker as an alternate. Whereas the village board of trustees has selected Connie Fiedler as chairperson. And it is hereby resolved that the election inspectors will be paid a fee of one hundred dollars. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To this resolution? Motion made, second?
I'll second.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Cool, carry. Under old business, our Hickory Park bathroom update. We're moving along, we've got the new electric service panel inside the building now. The, all the items that we need, the toilets just came in two days ago. The flush valves are in, the handrails are in, the hand dryers are in, the faucets are in. We're only waiting on exhaust fans, the door locks, and it's about, it's about it. So everything's in-house, a lot of the building materials are in stock now. They've started putting some of the new wood on the insides, new partitions. And they're moving along as, as we have times available along. It's not snowing, and they'll be over there, but like I said, Eric's been on vacation. And last week we had the snow, so I would think this coming week they will be hitting it pretty hard.
He's got, he's got sewer classes this week, this coming.
Oh, that's right. Okay, he's, Eric's the main, the main guy overseeing the project over there, so he's got a lot of building expertise. But it's coming along, I'm glad we've got everything pretty much in-house now, so we can assemble it all. You know, that was my concern, trying to get to, you know, everybody knows how, how hard it is to get stock and try and buy things. I mean, it's weeks and weeks and weeks out, so at least we've got the. Stocked, sinks are in also, so we're in good shape. The electric study. Electric sub-study, substation study. We've, we've talked about this now for. Couple of months, couple of meetings now. Is there any new questions on this?
Will they be working with National Grid on the supply side of that as well?
Yeah, yeah. You know, as I, they have to work close with National Grid to give out coordination. How are they coordinated on their lines? I don't know, we have that differential relay now running between our two stations. I don't know if they'll maintain that or not with a new station, but I would think we would because we're still going to have to operate the old. Station on Church Street, so. We're still going to need that, at least for the time being. But. This, it's time to, time to get moving. For this new substation. It's nearly its benchmark of forty years, it'd be, if you built a substation, if you started this today, it would take five years. Most likely to, for that substation to be energized. So we're looking at five years if we started today, so. The equipment we have there now is going to be forty-four years old, so it's a benchmark of the substation's forty years. And capacity wise, we're going to be needing more capacity than we have now. I look to the future and I see housing on Park View, and the way the state is mandated, no fossil fuels, it's going to be all electric. Heating these homes. More and more people are buying cars now, you have to plug them in, that's going to be the future. And all that is extra load, and we have to prepare ourselves for that for the future. So we're going to need to, you know, a lot more capacity than we currently have. We've already turned away people from our industrial parks, we don't have enough available power here from our current substation to supply that, so. It's, it's time we get moving on this. It's going to be a lot of money, yes it is, but there's. There's no way around it. I mean, our, our entire system is, I would say, the best from the state. Our infrastructure, but that's, the substation's the heart, the heart of this system. And when you're getting to forty years and beyond that, and you're starting to say, you know, your liability. It's time to upgrade. I ask that we do this engineering scope of services, get the ball rolling, at least we'll, we'll know what the engineering firm suggests, which way we proceed, and in which way, what equipment and a cost. So that we can prepare ourselves.
Just one point I might say, under section two here, it says that they will attend a meeting in version to discuss study requirements. Is that beginning, end, middle, and who are they having a meeting with? And I just would put a request that trustees would be invited to.
By all means, yeah, they would, they have to come out because they have to do survey the whole system. To see exactly, take all their, you know, data down, so they know exactly what we have here. And what our future needs are. So they would definitely come out. Hands on and the board, anybody that wants to come around with this is welcome to.
That would be my only, I would just like to make known when that will be, you're delighted to attend. I can't, I don't know a lot about it, and I'd like to learn a lot about it, so before I vote, I'm long term.
Yeah. Well, one thing's good, we did a study a few years ago about our, our line, our subtransmission line, you know, the capacity on that. So we've got that study already done, so that's going to help, you know, help this engineering firm, we've just given that, all that data. And they'll know exactly what's coming in power-wise, and how much load we can put on that, that transmission line, and build a substation accordingly. I'd like to, I'd like to make the substation match the maximum we can put on our lines. That way, when we're, when we're done building that station, we're pretty much done. It's thirty-four five subtransmission line, it's not a one fifteen line. So we're limited at our, how much load and capacity, you know, we have here. We, we looked at building a one fifteen line, how long ago, Matt? Few years ago, it was like. It was years ago, it was a million dollars a mile then, now it's, it's way more than that now.
Good luck getting right away for that.
Yeah.
Quite a fight to get the thirty-four baby line in, that we ultimately got in a while ago.
Yeah, we had the study done, and that line would come from Leroy. So that's seven miles away. I'm sure it's probably tripled now in the price. So it wasn't feasible. For the one fifteen line here, so we're, we've got a new thirty-four five line from Southwest, and.
And there, I don't know what all that means, so I'm not, I want to participate and learn as much as I can about it, so thank you.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying, I'm sorry. Again, you got so much capacity, and that's what you got, so we want to match our substation to what we got.
About twenty megawatts, right?
Twenty, yeah.
So you could get twenty megawatts energy through the line that's already there. Joe's saying he wants to build likely a twenty megawatt station, sort of. Making maximum use of the line that's in place, and you've got some little room for future development, things that are coming up.
All these cars are going to plug in.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, I'd need a motion too.
I will make a.
For the engineering scope of service. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All's carried. I will contact the engineer tomorrow. Get moving on this.
Have they assigned anybody to you, Joe, do you know who the person is?
Mike Barrett, P L N. He's done a lot of substations for other municipals in the M V O A, so he comes highly recommended. Anything else to bring before the board, before we proceed to close?
Next question. You, as part of the electrical study, you mentioned developing a Park View, has there been a moment in that discussion?
We're, we don't know where, where that is. What's her name, Mrs.?
Fellowwick.
Fellowwick, she passed away. Mrs. Fellowwick passed away. So I don't know if, I don't know where that stands now, who, who's going to take ownership of that property. But I have told Renee that she sees that. But I have told Renee that she sees anything come across her desk as far as a change of ownership, to let me know, and I've got two developers that I'd like to contact, to see if they can now reach out to the, whoever got the rights to the property now, to see if we can hook something up. Okay, so I believe I'd love to see houses down there.
Along with that, as far as electric's concerned, me and Nick have been contacting National Grid, because they have a line down the south side of that road. We talked to them on the phone last week, because we want to get ahead of the game and put our own line with underbuild down that road, so that when houses are ready, we're already ready to
When massive underbuild, our lines, they would be on top, and then National Grid would be underbuilding, their lines underneath. They don't even need their lines on that road, but
No.
They don't want to give them up, they don't use them, they can't use them.
So it's been, we've been trying to get ahold of them for like five years now, and it's just competitive thing, and very hard to be in contact with, so at least we've got some ground on it.
Now you have a new contact, right?
Right.
At grid, so. Okay.
Is your set tech system pretty much maxed, and how many more houses can you run?
Well, once we get the infiltration under control, these cat spaces I was talking about, getting all that infiltration from going in them will be, will be golden, and then we'll have capacity, so. That's why it's important, and that's why money was allocated in the, in the, that work that's being done.
Do you have any on the house that just passed Mike McGee, Julie's at Birmingham, is anybody buying that and put a house back in there, or?
No, we're
Just past San Maria, I, I hear that house is not historical society now, so that guy's not doing anything, like he's just like to sit there.
He put a new roof on it.
Put a new roof on it, yeah, but he has cut the trees down enough to get insurance, but he loved him. You see what he left? Yeah, just wanted to know that house.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all again for coming tonight.
We'll be back in five minutes, and you'll see me all over the place. Drags me by so good. She walks me, trust me. That's why I try to get out early in the morning before the squirrels get up, because when she sees the squirrels, you know, I'm hanging on for dear life. She only weighs 45 pounds, but she pulls like a dump truck. God, I gotta make her my wife. I took her down to Mike and his wife.
I'm curious, Steve.
And I took her down
How many suggest we go?
Last Friday, when it was a whole and they ran her around the backyard, they got a black. They got a fenced-in backyard, so they can run.